Okay, first of all ladies, please give a big round of applause please. You might be wondering what it is about, so let me tell you, this applause is for ourselves, for yourself, for being such a wonderful mother, daughter, wife and most importantly, a very strong woman, please give a big round of applause for yourself. Very good evening fellow Toastmasters and guests, I am Toastmaster Sangeeta, the Sergeant at Arms for today's meeting and I welcome each and everyone to the 40th meeting of one and only Women's Club Win Toastmasters. So let's get started, but before we move ahead, there are few ground rules that I would request each and everyone to kindly follow. Number one, switch on your cameras and turn off your mics and speak only when asked to. Number two, refrain yourself from speaking about sex, religion, politics in a derogatory manner. Number three, avoid the usage of abbreviation. For example, instead of addressing someone as TMOD, use Toastmaster of the day or calling someone as TM Sangeeta, use Toastmaster Sangeeta. Number four, rename yourself as per your role. For example, if you are timer, rename yourself as timer underscore your name. Since we all are connected through this virtual podium, there might be a possibility of technical glitch or you might get disconnected. Don't get panicked, you'll be reconnected within seconds. All our Win Toastmasters Club meetings have been recorded and been uploaded to YouTube. In case you missed it, you can have access to all our videos. So before I leave this podium, allow me to introduce someone who is an amazing, confident and a beautiful woman. I must say, she is one of the most empowering women I have ever seen. She passes on her positivity, confidence and empowerment to others by speeches. And yes, I really like her highlighted here. So please give a big round of applause for our president Toastmaster Shruti Shavastava.
Thank you so much for the warmest introduction Toastmasters Sangeeta and let me tell you something about Toastmasters Sangeeta, she is one of the youngest Toastmasters and plays the very important role of Sergeant at Arms, the responsible and accountable role of opening the meeting and she has been just killing it. So please give her a huge round of applause because she chooses herself over everything else. Coming to this meeting and coming to my presidential address, today we have lots of guests, lots of inspiring women and let me also tell you that each one of you is inspiring someone on this earth in one way or the other. Maybe you do not know because you are too busy in yourself grow because that is the strongest virtue that a person can have. Be so focused, be so engrossed in yourself that nothing can affect you. Yesterday someone asked me, do you have any regrets? So I had been approached by a photo journalist for an interview who is collecting stories and they wanted to have interviews for me in certain sections and one of which was asking, do I have any regrets? I told them I don't have any regrets. They asked me, how is it possible that you do not have any regrets? You are thirty-four now and you do not have any regrets? I don't think so. I'm like, the last time I was regretting was some, was when I lost a silver pendant that costed me thousand bucks and that happened a month ago. And they were amazed by the fact that how can someone live so freely? I told them that I live freely because regression or sorry, regretting about over something is nothing but just an experience. It is said that if you fail, if you do not win, if you are not successful, one thing that you will gain out of that experience is learning. And that's what we all are here for as Toastmasters, as humans, as women, we approach certain challenges, we take up new projects, we take up new jobs, we try to solve various problems in various workplaces, personal spaces. We sometimes are successful and most of the times we fail. Up to you, how you view that failure, how you see that experience as a learning or a place where you could not do anything about it. Moving forward, I would like to have guest introductions now because we have a lot of guests, we will be having two keynote today and a table topic and speaker is also here. So I'm very, very excited because today's session is going to be one fabulous session and you will not regret coming here. Do you have any regrets? Let me ask anyone of you, do you have any regrets? Let me ask probably Rohit. Rohit is our area director, welcome Rohit to this meeting. Rohit, do you have any regrets?
No, no, why would I have any regrets joining this meeting? It's always pleasure being in Win Toastmasters Club.
Thank you so much, would like to ask Neelooji, do you have any regrets ever?
Never.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you so much. We also have, in this club, we have women from all walks of life. Women who are into jobs, who are corporate professionals, women who are creating a queendom at their homes, they are the homemakers, women who are taking care of their families as the number one priority and women who are taking care of the careers as the number one priority. No matter what job role that you choose for yourself, you are no less than a powerful human and the energy that you are born with. Would like to ask Toastmaster Priya, how do you feel coming to Toastmasters after such a long time? We miss your presence, tell us.
Actually, I was also missing my presence in my home club, Win Toastmasters, but because of some reason, I have to discontinue. But I can say, learning from my club, I was missing very much.
This, this answer warms our heart because there are, in this club, there are women from various ages. I told you about Sangeeta, she is the youngest, I'm not going to tell you because any, no woman crosses the age of sweet sixteen, please huh, alright. And we have women who have gained experiences in various walks of life and everyone is here learning from each other and trust me, when a woman tells and fixes each other's crowns, each other's crown, it becomes the strongest space to grow. We have several guests here would be asking, guest Kamla, how did you come to know about Toastmasters and what brings you here and what are your expectations?
Shruti, it's a pleasure to see you all, all the Toastmasters. See, I have actually seen a very similar concept which is, which actually happens in Mumbai in my daughter's school, it's called the gavels club. They say it's a, it's an introductory part to the, to end the Toastmasters, you finish ten speeches. So I have seen my little ones prepare and go and be a part of the gavels club and she finished her ten papers and I'm so excited, probably I would love to join this Toastmasters Club one day.
Thank you, thank you so much and let me tell you Kamla is on a blogger and Sadi influencer, a fitness blogger on Instagram, if you wish to follow her and see her journey, it's, she will share her Instagram handle here and you can follow her. We also, yeah, we also have Rishika, not sure if you're a guest or a Toastmaster, would request you to introduce yourself to the club, Rishika. Guest Rishika, are you here with us? Alright, maybe she is away. With this, let's move forward in this meeting, in this meeting is going to be really exciting. I'm not going to take the swag away from anyone because we have someone who is going to be leading this meeting forward in her flamboyant ways and her energy, look at the yellow background behind her, someone who has been the strongest pillar, one of the strongest women that I've ever come across, someone who is unafraid, unabated, no matter what comes her way, she has devised ways in, in her life and if you get to know her journey, if you get to hear her icebreaker speech, I'm sure you are going to be joining the Jai Ti Datta Fan Club. With this, please happy welcome Toastmaster Jai Ti Datta as the Toastmaster of the evening, over to you Jai Ti.
Thank you, thank you so much for such wonderful words. Good evening my fellow Toastmasters ladies, ladies and if the gent is there, well, this is a ladies' club, so I'm going to just address the ladies. Hello, you amazing women, I am your Toastmaster of the day, I have brought the state at Toastmaster of the evening for today and today I'm going to take all the roles and I'm going to introduce you to all the roles who will be coming up in their times and speaking about themselves and I am also going to talk about the role or the theme which I have proposed and that is you are amazing. So based on this, I would like to tell you a story and the first story is about, always about my hero, my mom, my mother. You know, when I was going through that teen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, I was this rebellious kind of a woman, you know, and I never, never listened to my mom, never listened to my dad, did things I wanted to do myself. Then what happened was, one day I just went out of my way and did something which was absolutely intolerable, absolutely. So my mother, instead of admonishing me, she sat me down and she told me her story and today my friends, I'm going to tell you her story in her mouth, okay? The thing is, I'm going to relate the story as though she is sitting here, okay? Now my mother tells me, you know, she used to call me Tultu, she, she said, one day, that day, she said, Tultu, you know, I was a rebel myself, you know, when I was growing up, I never wanted to become a girl. Because all my brothers, they were playing cricket, they were going to school, they were reading, while I was doing the household chores and ironing their clothes. Because at that time, in my grandfather's house, this education concept for the girls was not there, it was absolutely not there. So my mom, what she did was, she somehow coached my grandfather and started going to school. When she, then she, on the condition that she will finish all her household chores huh, and then she can go to school, come back and then do all the chores and then she has the time, she'll read and write and do stuff. My mom tells me, you know what, when I used to sit and read a book, someone on the other was to come into the room and she used to say, kam ne hai kya tumko kuchh, don't you have any other work to do? And I used to feel so bad because my brothers didn't face anything like this, I'm the one who has to face this. So whenever from next time I was reading a book, if I heard footsteps, I quickly hit it under, on the chair, on the, I kept it on the chair and I sat on it. That is how I continued my reading. My mom says that after some time, she even coached my grandfather to get him to college. She got into college and she passed with a double distinction. Then what is the thing after that? Married, she was married off immediately after that. Why? Because my grandfather felt that at that time, if the girl was very much educated, she will not get a proper groom. Now what happened was, it was very funny, you know, my mom got married and her mindset, her thought processes started imbibing with the social conditions at that time. So when she conceived me and she gave birth, the doctor told her that it was a girl child, she burst out into tears. You know why? Because she was ashamed that she could not give a birth to a son. She was ashamed, she was feeling bad that she had dashed the hopes of both the families. So she came home with me and then after a few months, realization dawned on her. She realized, she started asking her son, she was telling me, I started thinking, what is my fault and what is this infant's fault? That we are being treated this way, that was the time she was, she started rebelling. She started getting angry and they say anger is the first revolutionary action. She started getting angry and you know, you know what she did, nothing, she just started respecting herself. And if she wanted something, she made it a point that she said it, that it is my right in this way, she said. Okay, and that is how she started respecting herself and slowly and steadily, she went ahead and got further educated and started teaching. So my friends, this is my mother's amazing story, the story about this amazing woman. So my friends, today in our session, we have three parts. The first one is our keynote speakers, where we get to listen to our keynote speakers. The second one is our table topic section where we have a fun time and the third one is the most important, the evaluation section. Now, I would like to call upon our general evaluator for today, DTM Swarna, please come on to the podium and explain her role. DTM Swarna, please ladies, welcome her with a thunderous applause, come on ladies.
Oh, such a lovely introduction Toastmaster of the day Jai Ti and lovely evening to all of you here and as we are celebrating March as the month of Women's Day, I think we should all wish ourselves a wonderful month-long celebration, yeah? Now, coming to my role as a general evaluator, I'm here to observe and take notes of how the meeting takes place and also look at the, evaluate the various role holders in this meeting. So that I will be doing at the end of the meeting, but now I would like to invite the timer today, Toastmaster Shruti, to share and tell us what she will be doing and how she's going to time the meeting.
Thank you so much for inviting me here to explain my role, timing is everything. When you propose a girl, when you propose a boy, when you propose your partner, when you deliver a speech, when you get ready and fool people that I'll be ready in two minutes and then you take two hours perhaps, timing is everything and that's the case in Toastmasters meetings also. And here I am, doing my job at my best because all these speeches in Toastmasters are timed, whether be it the prepared speeches or evaluation or table topics. Today we do not have any of the prepared speeches, but we have table topics. All the table topics are timed from one minute to two minutes, at one minute I'll be showing the green card, at one point five minutes I'll be showing the yellow card, at two minutes I'll be showing the red card and that means you need to stop, you need to wrap up and there is a thirty second of upper limit that you can use. After two minute thirty seconds, you will not be allowed or you will be disqualified from the voting part. For the evaluation today, since there are no prepared speeches, no evaluations, there will be just two keynote speeches. So with this and I will be delivering, I'll be showing the timers card in my shared screen. So that's how I'll be doing it, over to you, distinguished Toastmasters Swarna.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Shruti here, thank you and let us go to the next segment, the next role holder, who is the grammarian, Sangeeta, Toastmaster Sangeeta, can you please share with us what role you will be performing and also if there is a word of the day for all of us to perform?
Thank you, General Evaluator, I am Toastmaster Sangeeta and I'll be playing the role of grammarian. As a grammarian, I carefully observe the language used in the meeting, I will take note of exceptionally skillful words as well as not so good words. Also, I am responsible to introduce the word of the day and the word of the day is, is parki, lively and high spirited. For example, her sparki personality or shweta have a parki smile. I would request everyone to use this word as much as possible in your speech. Thank you, over to you, General Evaluator.
Thank you so much Sangeeta, lovely words, parki indeed, yeah. Today, let me call upon the our counter, Toastmaster Neelu, we would love to hear from you, your role and what you're going to do today. Thank you so much Madam General Evaluator. I have a fried peanut for you all, you must be thinking what I'm saying, but if I will say, I have a fried peanut for y'all, yes, badam, badam, I have kacham, badam. So you must have to keep control on yourself, I will keep track as a role of our counter of your every, oh, ah, ouch, yes, the every word which will sound as an interjections such like and where, but you know, as well as sounds like aha, hmm, air will be made an audible click, I will note any uses of touch of filler words and I will also keep track of how much time you take small pause or long pause and I will give my report when to Madam General Evaluator to call to do so. Over to you, Madam General Evaluator, thank you. Thank you so much Toastmaster Neelu, wow, that was really animated, I'm sure everyone's going to remember not to do the things you did. Thank you and let us go to the last role holder today, who is the Listening Master and we have a very passionate homemaker, Toastmaster Priya, who is going to share with us the role and what she's going to do during this meeting.
I am Priya Sinha, today I am introduced as an active listener. My role, my role is to listen every speaker very carefully and formulate some questions from the session, interesting questions from the session throughout. I will be back with my question when called upon by the General Evaluator during evaluation segment, thank you, over to the General Evaluator.
Thank you so much, let us all hope that we have a fantastic meeting today and I now hand over the stage back to the Toastmaster of the day, Jai Ti.
Thank you, General Evaluator ladies, I would like to reintroduce you to one of our amazing women present right over here. She is, she belongs to the Kattong Toastmasters Club in District eighty, Quantum Leap Toastmaster Club in D122, Leader, Leaders Worldwide Toastmaster Club in D57, DTM Swarna Kalyan. She is a mother of two and decided to devote her time to herself, to herself and when her children were grown up and self-reliant, she didn't want the nagging mother around them. Although she has been working part-time for many years, she has decided to concentrate on her career growth in 2015 and realized that communication with adults was very difficult from talking to children and that is where she decided, decided to explore this wonderful place of Toastmasters. Ladies, this is one amazing woman who is present right in front of us over here, please give her a very big round of applause. Thank you for being here, thank you for taking the time out for us, thank you. Ladies, now we go on to our keynote speakers. First, we have Kalpana, sorry, not sorry, I'm sorry. First speaker is Toastmaster Priyadarshini San Gupta. Toastmaster Priyadarshini San Gupta, she is a Toastmaster for a little more than three years now and is a division level runners-up at Evaluation and Table Topics Contest. She is a teacher, please welcome this beautiful, charming, buggy, young, amazing woman on the podium, Toastmaster Priyadarshini, the podium is yours, please give her a thunderous applause ladies.
Thank you so much Toastmaster of the evening, Jai Ti ma'am and okay, I forgot I'm not supposed to address you as ma'am, but then habits can't be, they cannot be overcome overnight, I mean over an evening. So thank you so much, it's, it's wonderful to be a part of a club where we have all women. Actually, when Rohit was here, I was wondering how would I address the audience, what should I do with, good evening ladies and my dear brother Rohit because he's so much younger, but now that Rohit is not here, even that hiccup is gone. So good evening ladies, beautiful, wonderful, amazing ladies to this beautiful evening. So today we stand, we are here to celebrate Women's Day, right? So the theme here all about revolt somewhere around Women's Day. So Mahatma Gandhi once said, if you educate a man, you educate an individual, but if you educate a woman, you educate an entire society. The society, in our society, the position of women has been glorified since times immemorial. If you go back into the ancient wages where we had great scholars like Gayatri and Mehtri, we have had such wonderful women who have left their mark in our ancient history, how can we say that women are not strong enough? This question has been raised since times immemorial and women have often been referred to things like the weaker gender, the fairer sex, the pink lovers, well, women are not just about the fairer sex, the being the fairer one or the ones who cannot love colors other than pink. We can have love any color of our choice, every color is so dear to each and every woman. Well, if I talk about this kind of the mentality or the kind of every revolution that we have been seeing in the status of women, there has been a lot of improvement. I accept the fact that women have been subjected to atrocities like the sati, child marriages, dowries, domestic violence, gender inequalities and all these things. But does it mean that we should set, hold ourselves back and not try to fight it out? Do you really think that it is only the women folk who are being, who are being subjected to any kind of injustice? Are not the men folk being subjected to different injustices? Yes, they are. So today I am not here as a crusader of women empowerment or I'm not here to tell you that we are a competition to men, I am not here to prove that we are superior to men, I am here as an advocate of equality. I do not want to be superior to my men counterpart, I want to be equal. I do not want to prove myself that I'm better off than any man, I don't want to become a better half of someone, I want to compliment a man. It is our responsibility as an individual, let alone the idea of gender, whether a man or a woman, that we need to compete, it's time that we complement. When the chivalinger is, when the chivaling is, is, is the representation of the male and the female yoni, which is inseparable, the yin and the yang is inseparable, so how can you divide a man and a woman and treat them as separate entities in a society? They are inseparable, they complement each other, we have never been competing with each other. So please ladies and gentlemen, you need to understand this, that no, we are not here to compete, rather, we are here to complement. I want to be treated as equal, I want to be treated at part with my male counterparts, whether it is at my job or it is at home or it is on the road when I drive my two-wheeler. Nobody has a right to tell me, a aurat hai, isko nahi aata hai, gaadi chalana. So this is something which we have often heard and I'm sure each one of you who has ever taken your two-wheeler or four-wheeler out on the road would have been heard, would have been hearing such comments, no, I deserve to be respected. Now, when I look back and I start thinking as to where, where from did I get these ideas? What, what is it that has instilled this, this kind of feeling in me? What is it that makes me so rebellious that whenever somebody tries to put me down, I want to simply fight it out? So when I was asked to come here as a keynote speaker, so I started thinking as to what is it that propelled me to become a crusader or an ambassador for promoting equality and not competing with the men folk? When I look back, I have been trained, I have been conditioned by the women that I have met in my life. I understand the fact that a mother plays a very, very important role in our lives. She has left an indelible mark in all our lives, but today I am not going to tell you about the stories of inspiration that I have drawn from my mother because the list is never-ending. I will tell you a story of a woman whom I had met in my college and she was my lecturer. This lecturer of mine was my teacher in the postgraduate department, she was the youngest amongst. She was the youngest amongst all the teachers, trust me. She was hardly five to six years elder to us and she walked into the college to take up classes for the post-graduation level. She was a gold medalist in her field and the best teacher I have ever met. Now, why do I call her a best teacher? She belonged to a Telugu medium school. I have completed my college from Andhra Pradesh. So that is the reason why she belonged to a Telugu medium school. She is Telugu medium background. She had no idea about framing sentences in English. So in the beginning years of her career, when she had students, they were all Telugu speaking. So she did not have much difficulty in teaching them. She would speak broken pieces of English and mix it up with Telugu. So that would not be much of a difficulty for her. But when we came in, our batch came in, there were a few students who belonged to the other states wherein this language that we spoke was Hindi. We never understood what we never understood Telugu, especially if it was a medium of instruction in the college. So what she used to do was she used to pick textbooks of foreign authors, the most difficult English that people could have ever read. She would literally memorize pieces and paragraphs from the book and then present it in an easier way so that all of us could understand. Her knowledge and her command over the subject was undisputable. She would stand on the board with just one chalk, no reference material and there she was. At times she appeared to me like the goddess of chemistry because there was probably no question which she couldn't have answered. When I look back on my college days, being a part of the girls' college, there are so many stories that you know they keep on affecting you. I remember there were twin sisters, beautiful looking, such beauties, but the father never wanted them. He would abuse them every day because they were girls. Do they deserve? Did they deserve this? They were coming to college. They were doing very well in the college. Now, what was their fault? Just because we are born with a uterus and things like you cannot you cannot keep keep admonishing us like this. I remember my girls of my age then seventeen eighteen years who would walk into the examination room nine months pregnant because they had been married of early. This was a common thing which is still practiced in many parts of India where a girl just turns eighteen and then she is married. So they were around nearly eight almost eighteen or eighteen and a half ninety and they used to walk into the examination room. They would wait in queues outside for their turn to enter or to collect their admit cards because rules would not be changed for people. We could make small attempts to give them some comfort but that would never be permanent. So I all these things that I have been seeing for so many years have actually kind of led me to believe that I should not hold myself back. There should be nothing in this world and outside or in the universe that should ever tell me that I can not do this because I'm a woman. I may have, I may lack in my qualities, I may not have the required set of skills, but I will imbibe them. I am free to imbibe any skill, but putting me back just because I'm a woman is unacceptable. I choose not to accept it. But how do I do it? Like what what should I do for so that I can be at par with the men folk? So there was a time, a phase wherein I had I was facing failures after failures. I was absolutely let down. Nothing seemed to work. I was into a profession which I which I hated. Like not simply hate would be a very inappropriate word. So we usually have career plans, you know, plan A, plan B. So this thing did not appear in my list of plans A to Z. It was beyond the Z, okay? So I had to do this because there were certain the things that certain things did not turn out the way I had to be. So I remember when I took up teaching as a profession, I literally did not want to be in this profession. So for at least two years of my of the beginning of my career, I would probably cry every morning that I don't want to do it, then wipe my tears, put on a nice makeup and then walk to school with the most the biggest smile that I could put on and I would come back being complimented as the best teacher in the school probably because they had they didn't find someone better. So this continued for probably two years and then in the third year I decided that this cannot go on for long, you know. It it's it's taking toll on me. I cannot keep on wearing that mask every day. That mask will fall off someday. And the day it falls, that outburst is going to be very bad. It it's it will not reflect well on what I am, who I am, what the perception of people is of me around me. So I need to make changes. So changes cannot be made overnight and I am a torian. I hate changes. I I simply don't like changes. Change is not at all constant for me. I don't like changes. So but it had to be made step by step, one step at a time. So the first change that I tried to bring in was accepting myself. I told myself I am best at this job. Whether I accept it or not, I am made for this. I need to explore better opportunities in this field. This is probably the place where I could grow. Three years into the thing inclusive of the two years of my crying and lamenting every day plus one year, I found a better opportunity with double the salary that I was actually getting. I got a kind of a promotion that is I was elevated from teaching at only the plus standard and level to plus two. Now that too without an experience in one of the front-ranking schools in the city. So that led me to think as to why would they hire me? Because when you come from a small place, you start assuming things that bigger places are unapproachable places, big places, big experiences, big qualifications. So all these things they keep somewhere bankrolling at the back of your mind. So I started understanding the fact behind it and I started analyzing my skills. So in spite of not liking the profession somewhere or the other, I had the seeds of this this profession. I could excel in this field. So why not give it a wholehearted shot? Why not try for it wholeheartedly? Why not accept myself? So I believe the very first step towards becoming a better version of yourself is accepting yourself is self-love. Of all the things in the world, how much so ever busy you are, how much so ever preoccupied you are, it is not impossible to not take out some time for yourself. Even if it is five minutes, even if it is ten minutes, twenty minutes, if you can afford more, do something that you love to do. I somewhere left reading. I used to read a lot when I was in college. I simply left reading and all my free time would be wasted in taking watching stories on Instagram, looking at inspirational stories instead of looking for inspiration within me. So that's exactly what we do when you are let down. The first thing that you do is you turn on to YouTube and you type inspirational stories, okay? Or you type on Google how to be inspired each day, how to find that perfect job, how to be job-ready. I follow people randomly follow people on Instagram with whom I have absolutely nothing to do. They will not contribute in any way to my personal growth, to my professional growth. So instead of actually looking for inspiration outside, I went back to being myself, my happy self, right? So that was the first thing. So self-love is probably the most important. I know lot is being said nowadays after the COVID with regards to the number of suicides increasing, cases of domestic violence increasing, mental health being put at stake, lot of things are being said. But what exactly is self-love? Self-love is simply accepting yourself. If people say I am fat, I am fat. So I have no problem in being called fat. I need to accept it. If I don't like my fat self, I need to exercise to become my thin self. But just because I'm fat, you cannot put me down. So this is accepting. So more the more accepting you become of yourself, it is absolutely okay. See, I'm not glorifying being fat or being obese. Health is always a priority. But you cannot go from fat to thin. I know fat is a very wrong word. We call it healthy and things like that. But that's not the way people address you, right? They are not very sweet when they call you fat. They don't sugarcoat it. They don't quote it in honey. They say you are fat right on your face. So if I'm fat and I don't like my fat self, I need to make efforts to go back to my thin self. So maybe that is the first thing that I realized. Great. If I'm not good at something, good, no problem. I have no problems being that way. I can change myself. The second thing that I did was I became a rebel. I simply stopped giving any importance to what people think about me. That was the first second important thing I did. So in the first three years, just because I was very good at studies and academics, you know, when you're good in academics and you come first for probably a couple of years, people start believing you are the next Microsoft CEO. And then ultimately when you don't become one, they kind of tell you on your face, oh my goodness, you have not come up to my expectations. So one day I sat back and think thought that I started thinking as to is my whole existence and this whole existence of myself as Priyadarshini San Gupta, is it to please people or is it to only become a good daughter, a good student, a good this, a good that? Why can't I be just good to myself? So I decided that I am not going to listen to what other people think of me, let alone the idea of what the people say about me. Log kya sochthe hain ye bhi main sochhoon to log kya kareenge? So let them think. Let them think whatever they feel like. So this is probably the second thing that I did. And the third thing is breaking the bias. So I simply did not want to confine myself within the shackles of being called as a woman or being married off at a particular age, having children at a particular age. So I had the support of my family, not to deny that even for once, I definitely had the support of my family. When twenty-one-year-old Harna Sandhu can become Miss Universe after twenty-one years of not bringing the crown to the country, everybody is capable of achieving their dreams. So this is something that we need to understand. Each one of us needs to accept it. Secondly, you need to believe what you believe in very strongly. Many years ago, when in America, they were fighting for the rights of the black. Rosa Parks sat still in the bus. She refused to give her seat to an American white, not because she was tired. It is because she was tired of giving in. Do not give in. You need to keep fighting. At least there won't be any regret that I did not try enough. It's okay. You know, once the time is gone, you may not get back those opportunities. But regretting over something is probably the worst thing you can do to yourself. I have promised myself that if I want to do something, I'll give it my best. I may get through it. I may not get through it. I have a long list of failures. Addition of one more would not make any difference to it. So if I have hundred failures, a hundred and first first failure would only add a feather to my cap. It would not make any difference in my life. So does I remain I have to completely become unaffected by those. So when every woman can break the bias, each one of us should try. And I'm pretty sure as to what I am saying or what I am trying to tell in all these things, all of us have been doing this for a very long time because we have women here who come from different age groups, who come from different walks of life, who come from different backgrounds. Without following these or without attempting this, you would not have been here. You would have never made it to a Toastmasters meeting. You would have sat in some corner of your house, sitting and cursing your future and your past and your present. Each one of us have made that attempt, which is why we are here in our own ways. Ways are never different. Ways are all similar. The only thing that makes a difference is what exactly or in which way you do it. Supposing you want to study. So how do you do it? What are what approach or what did you do to make your lives better? And the most important thing that I have told myself is I am doing it for myself and for no one else. So I decide to be happy. I choose to be happy. I will succeed in life. Let alone what people talk, let alone the fact how much time it takes. We all have our own times. We all have had our own set of opportunities. If there are a set of people who have had more opportunities earlier in their life, they have become better than me. Well and good, I will earn my own set. So with this, congratulations and I celebrate each and every woman present here today on this meeting. Thank you so much for having me here as speaker. Thank you.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Priyadarshini. Yes, you're right. We have to live for ourselves. We have to do for ourselves and we have to achieve for ourselves. That is how we go. Thank you so much for such a beautiful motivation and inspirational speech. Thank you so much. Now ladies, we go on to our next keynote speaker. This keynote speaker to celebrate empowering women, we have Winnie, also known as Vinutna Bandaru, who is determined to accomplish her goals, working as her own, working as her own boss and running an online store. Is her vision is sorry, her vision is to set a partnership with a giant retail store like Lifestyle and Mintra. Toastmasters, please welcome Vinutna onto the podium. Vinutna, please come onto the podium. It is all yours. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jai P. Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. I'm Vinutna. People call me Winnie. First and foremost, let me thank Shruti for inviting me to the club. And I'm really honored to be called as a speaker for this event on the eve of International Women's Day on March eighth. So let me first congratulate each one of you. It was always my dream to be a Toastmaster but I could not somehow gather the courage to be. But seeing all you is like really inspiring me to be one. Maybe hopefully I'll be so one day. So thank you. And so let me be begin this by talking a bit about myself. So my parents gave me a very unique name, Vinutna, and quite a tongue twister it is, I know. So everyone calls me Winnie. That's the way. So initial days of my career, I started at KPO and I was into healthcare industry for few years in learning and development segment. But during my days in MBA at Central University of Hyderabad, I was always interested into marketing and I was always a marketing person and I wanted to start something on my own. So after working for like five to six years, I thought no, let me start something of my own and I've worked as an employee. So also we me and my husband, we actually took a very important decision of my of our life being that we we decided to be child-free. And that decision actually opened a lot of opportunities for me because I felt I was free. I was free and I could do anything that I always wished for. So there was lot of less responsibility on my shoulders that I felt and I thought, you know, I have to start something of my own and even my husband is into a startup. So he always encouraged me also to be in the same line. So but my parents were like initially hesitant because my father always wanted to see me in a very big corporate role. And then he was like, okay, you want to do business, okay? And then we started discussing the business decisions. So initially because I'm I come from healthcare background, so it was like let's do something in medical field. Then we thought no, it will be very labor-intensive, we thought food-related business again. Though my parents come from very, you know, progressive background, they're like communist. These things are there but even then they asked me not to go choose any business where I have to deal with lot of men. So that bias was always there. So then they suggested why not fashion? Because fashion, there are less people involved and you can do it easily. So that was my. So that was my, that was the suggestion that I got even from my husband. Then I said, okay, let me try this. But I was taken aback by that, you know, decision, but I said, okay. But in fashion again, I always had love for sarees, because I have seen, I always looked up to people in my life. All my teachers and my mom also being a teacher, I've always seen, growing up, seen her. In crisp cotton sarees and I would love, and the whole persona, all the vibe of her in the school, she would be like always looked up. And I would love that. So I also wanted to be that person. So I started wearing sarees and I also. But again, I had no contact of my own who runs business actually. So not even first level, second level, no one in my family and my friends who run businesses. So I was like, I started from zero. So Google was a big help and India Mart obviously. So I started Googling for viewers and weaves. I had no knowledge. I loved sarees, that, all that I know, but I had no knowledge of weaves and all. So I Googled and I got few contacts and then I went to few places in India, the weaves which I like. I went personally there and learnt about them and then came back and realized, okay, I could start something of my own. But I had no capital. So thanks to the gold that we Indians always procure. So I kept my gold in the bank and got some chunk of money and started my business on that. And then, thank you. Then I started, when I started my journey, I was all alone. But today I work with number of weavers, there are tailors, there are cutting masters, fitting masters, dyers. And there are women who do the hemming work and there's so many people. So whenever I create one design. So sometimes the product is a tough flop, failure. And then there's a bit cute disappointment that we have amongst ourselves and there's also some fight. That my tailor is like, ye aise nahi ban sakta hai, aap aise karoge to ye nahi acha dekhega. And I say, no, no. Ye ho sakta hai. And there's always that cute disappointment, disagreement and fight between us. But then we also enjoy the success together. When I get good reviews from my customers, I always share with them. Sometimes we celebrate the success and it's like really nice to the, it's liberating. Because in, when I was an employee, I was not able to affect people's lives in a positive way. But now I feel, I have lot of, you know, positive motivation. When I see their faces, when I give them the money. And sorry, I forgot to mention my, the store's name, it is necessary. And the caption I use is the ethical store. So why ethical? So I never bargain with my workers. So whatever they demand, I just blindly give them the pay. So that is my, you know, the ethics that I use always. So the dyers, the everyone, we work as a team and we are like always happy. But the. I also feel that more and more women should be, you know, financially independent. And also, I see many women, they don't. Who, the women who especially don't work, they are always under this guilt of, you know, because we don't work, we have to be at home. And we should work extra to compensate for the, you know, not being, not earning. So that is always there. And I suggest more and more women can start something of their own. But it is very simple these days, you need not, you can sit at home and earn money. That has been made possible with the technology. So sometimes I feel like I am an ad from, you know, Visa card. Because I sit at home, I just call my dyer and say, bhaiya, yahan se panch saree malka uthaalo, ye ye color hai, ye dye kar do. Okay. And then I send that, I use Uber and then I send those sarees to the dyer printers. The block printer guy does the printing and then they send back to me, I send them to rolling, rolling guys and the product is done. So it's very easy. So I, I encourage more and more people to come and start working on their ideas. And start something on their own, because employment is not easy. Because many of us don't get that opportunity. First of all, we don't get that education. This is biased. So we, when we don't have education, but we have brains, we have technology, we have access to lot of things. And we can start and business on our own. So I would encourage everyone to start something on their own. So with that, I would like to end this speech. Thank you so much for inviting me to this. Thank you. Over to you, Jyoti.
Thank you Winnie. May I call you Winnie?
Yes.
Thank you so much Winnie ladies. Come on, give her a big round of applause. Come on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much Winnie. I am definitely inspired. I am getting back to you after this session. I'm calling you up and I'm asking you seriously, I'm serious about that. Okay. Such a lovely woman who has made her dreams come true. Lovely, wonderful. So inspired. Now ladies, I would request any of, any of you. Anyone, just come up and tell us your stories, your struggles. We'll start with Nilu.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Jyoti for the opportunity. If I will start sharing my suffering, I will go on and on and on. Life is full of ups and downs. So I am sharing just few things with all of you. I got married in a, my childhood was mark of suffering. My parents always liked a male child that lived with us six sisters. Yes, and a constraint resources. For that, my mom opened a school in which we all sister assist them. Today, if people know me with, a woman with many attributes, just because of my mom. She helped us in grow. After that, when I got married. Some circumstances came to me like we were on road and I had to suffer a lot. And again, I started giving cushions and all. And they passed and it is very. Today, I'm saying happily that I have everything in my life. And yes, if you have courage to move ahead, you will win, win. And it is for sure, nothing, nothing is impossible for us. Whatever you desire, you can win. That is why we are in win. Over to you, Toastmaster Jyoti.
Nilu, you're one person who is so motivating. I tell you. When you open your mouth and start speaking, it's like your whole being is alive. And you are radiating energy which we receive. Thank you so much. Priya, Toastmaster Priya, can you please share your story?
Yes, yes. Oh, sorry. Sorry. I am going to share a very small story of my life. Actually, my husband is associated with the wool industry. And we had to stay in woolfield areas where schooling was not so good. A time came when I have to, I have just, I have a thought for. I was struggling for the thought of whether I should go with him. Or to stay with my children alone in the city to, to provide them a very good education. Finally, I decided not to go with him and I stayed alone with the two small kids in the city. And got them admitted in a very good school of the town. Today, I feel that it was my good decision that worked and I am very happy with that. Thank you. Over to the Toastmaster.
Toastmaster Priya, you're always such a pleasure to listen to. You are one amazing woman. Thank you so much. Toastmaster Rupa, are you here, Rupa Sri?
Yeah, silently listening to all the winners.
Talk about you, please. We would like to hear about you.
Right. So like, please excuse me, I will not be able to switch on my camera. If I switch it on, I'll be off from the system.
Oh, no, no problem, no problem.
Network is not supporting today. Well, thank you Nilu for inviting me here and such amazing stories shared by such wonderful people here. Well, my story had been, it's all of us, ups and downs. While a child, I was a bit alone in my family because my parents were working. And I had my elder brother who was busy in his own world and I was very happy. And that's what at least I reflected, but maybe I wasn't inside. This loneliness was eating me somehow, which I was not understanding. And whoever came to our house, I somehow went to. Went to grab their attention, rushed to them, hugged them. That led to so much of negativities, because a girl, a small girl, when trying to hug any random person coming to the house. Will certainly not be left easily. So all the opportunities were taken to molest me. By people coming to my house, when I was such a small child, maybe about six, seven, eight, and it continued. I could not share it with my parents, because that freedom was not there, that, that relationship was not there maybe. Nobody was at fault. The thing was that, maybe as parents, they have not been able to. Create that relationship and as a child, myself also could not open up to themselves, to, to, to my parents to a certain extent. And that made me go silent. Now I was laughing outside, everybody knew I'm such a jovial person. And I make, I'm so fun to be with, but I was not. I was so, I, I never had confidence. I lacked confidence every time. I was bullied, I was laughed at, I was mocked by, by my own brother at times. Though he definitely didn't understand that he's hurting me, but I was being hurt many a time. Things moved on and the worst thing that resulted was that I was superbly having lack of confidence. I could never gather confidence to go up and speak, but I could not, I, I never showed it. I was, people always thought, okay, she can do anything and everything that she wishes to. But this is the, the worst thing that happened is that going forward, while in, I was in my profession. Again, I was being molested by senior official and the worst thing happened that I could not speak again. I was silent and I was waiting for things to improve. That was the worst thing that I was trying to do, because I thought that, okay, my parents have taught me silent, chup raho. Bengali and Bengali deta kahaavat, bo bar shwatra nahi. So be a dumb person, so that everything normalizes. And I was trying to do it for months and months and months and things were deteriorating. Until one day, when I finally decided enough, let's fight back. Cannot let people take chance of you so easily. Silence is not the way we should deal with our problems. We have to speak up and we should. I'm still fighting for the case. And I'm sure whatever comes up, I'm ready to accept. Things will be positive, but at least I'll never be silent. Thank you. Over to you, Timon Jyoti.
Rupa, that was incredible, incredible story of you fighting of your strength. An incredible story of how you're standing your ground. Thank you so much for sharing those inner thoughts. I know it wasn't easy. I know that. Thank you so much. I feel like giving you a hug, right?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, can I request Kamala Iyer? If you can, would you like to speak something about yourself, your struggle?
Hi everyone, I would like to thank Shruti for giving me this opportunity. It was just, you know, a link that she sent and I thought of just logging in. I have an interview at eight, I have a live at eight on Insta. But yes, since it's Mother, not Women's Day, which is going to be on eight, which is going to be celebrated on eight. I would like to tell a small snippet from my life. I had a stepmom at the age of twelve. This woman who came into our lives, just took charge of three children at her, at, at the age of thirty, she was barely thirty. And you know the kind of image that, that the movies had created, my, my, my mother had died the previous year. Of cardiac arrest at the age of thirty-two, after the, after the childbirth, after the third birth, after giving birth to the third child. And this woman came into our lives and just, she became my best friend, you know, at, at, at your teens, when you need your mom the most. She was there and unfortunately, I lost her too, to liver failure in two thousand nine. But I think that's the best thing that happened to me. If, 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 all these cliches of stepmom torturing you, that's how, that's how gently movies have shown you. And that was the only fear I had at a twelve-year-old. You know, you, you're binging on Bollywood movies and you know, a second woman is coming into your life and how is this going to be? But I think I had an beautiful climax to my story with this woman just changing our lives for the better. Ever, ever grateful to her.
I want to, I want to add something. Can you say something in Palakad Party's accent, please?
Okay, okay. It's called, okay, I just saved a thank you note for all of you in the Palakad Tamil. Palakad Tamil is actually a Kerala-Tamil border area, Palakad. And we speak as very different dialect, a little mix of Palakad, Tamil and Malayalam. It, it all sounds like Khan Garden one big pot. Thank you lady. Hope to, hope to be joining this very soon. I would love to be a part of this.
Please come, you're welcome. We are here with our arms open, waiting for you. Anybody else would like to share? Anybody, anybody, anyone? What about our general evaluator?
Thanks for asking, Jyoti. I, I guess all of us have our ups and downs, right? If we didn't have, I don't think life is interesting. And I think the beauty of being a woman is that we do it so fantastically now, we never show it out. We may struggle inside like how Rupa was sharing, right? But we never show it out. And that makes us, I think, I, I, I would like to say like a diamond, you know, we go through so much. That in the end, we end up shining and sparkling. And I remember, I mean, in the beginning Shruti was asking, is there any regret, anyone has regrets? And I would say, yes, I do have one regret. I took up, or I joined Toastmasters when I was almost close to fifty. And I wish I had known about this earlier and I think my life would have been much, much better. I would have had clarity of thoughts, I would have done perfectly well and, you know, many, many things that I fumbled earlier in life. So if any one of you here is thinking, should I do it or shouldn't I do it, I think please don't waste. Because time is, is the most precious thing in our lives. So seize the moment, keep going. Don't wait for some, so whatever time to come, do it now. And now is the time. That's, that's what something I want to share. Over to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for those wonderful words. Amazing. All of you are so amazing. And I'm open to any more stories, anybody else? Toastmaster Priya Darshini?
I have let all my cats out of the bag, ma'am.
Wonderful. That was wonderful speech you gave. Really, after a long time, I've heard something like that. Thank you so much for coming on. And ladies, anybody else would like to share anything? This is the podium where we let our hearts out. Come on.
I have a thought to share.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So like Swarna said that it is our challenges and it is our problems that make us. I truly believe in that. And in Hindi, there is a saying, zindagi sirf unki hoti hai, jinke halat unke against hota hai, unke khilaf hota hai. And in Hindi, there is a saying, zindagi sirf unki hoti hai, jinke halat unke against hotai, unke khilaf hotai hai. Unki zindagi nahi hoti, jinke halat unke saath hotai hai. Kyunki aapke halat hi aapko banate hai. Everyone, each one of us has had a struggle in our lives. And each of that struggle, every struggle of ours is making us what we are today. If you see me confidently flaunting these curly hair, colored hair, wearing sarees, no matter what, no matter if my boss would have said that Shruti, you cannot wear sarees because they are like too distracting. And people have been told that in US and UK because they see, they say that midriff is visible and it's too distracting. Why can't you mind your own business? If anyone would have told me ten years ago that curly hair is not corporate enough, I would have blindly believed it. And I did. Right now, if someone tells me that curly hair is something which is distracting and not corporate enough, I will show them with my work that curly hair is not going to design your creative dood. I am going to. It's my brain beneath these curly hair. If anyone tells you that you are having your flaunting your gray hair, flaunting your belly and flaunting your crop top and telling you not to do this, tell them that it's my life, it's my choice, I will choose what I do with me and myself. There is no one who can tell you otherwise because you are born equal. And when this world was created, it was created with parity, it was created with equality and let's let's strive towards that equality like Priyadarshini rightly said in her speech that there is no way to flaunt or to advocate that women are superior, no one is superior. Everyone is equal. And we are just saying as feminists, everyone is a feminist and we are just saying that we are seeking equality. We are seeking fifty percent of load, that's it. Rest of it, you keep it. If your partners are helping you in doing the dishes, let's not glorify it. Let's not say, oh, you're very lucky, your partner is doing this. If your child is, you know, giving you a nice head massage who is like, say, six years old, if your if your boy is giving you a head massage, don't glorify it. Oh, his wife would be so lucky. Why? They have to learn this. They have to learn this at some point in time. And it becomes as mothers, it becomes really hard to let go of that armor in front of our children. And I've seen my mother-in-law, who was a Bengali artist and a singer, do this to her own kids. Two kids, one of which I am taming right now. I've tamed it pretty well in fifteen years of relationship and marriage. But the second one is having some hard time because my mom-in-law is no more. And he feels that he misses that pedestal, he misses that cushion. So let's make sure that we are training our boys very nicely, if your partners, boys, brothers, and tell them that you are not superior. You are as good as the counterpart that you have in your life. That was it. Over to you, Jayati.
Thank you, Shruti. Wow, wow, wow. Such amazing stories from such amazing woman. Now ladies, let's go on to the next session, next section in our session and that is the table topic section. Now to take care of this section, we have our energetic table topic master, Toastmaster Neelu. Toastmaster Neelu, who is a passionate Toastmaster since a decade, has taken up various EC roles and was instrumental in chartering many clubs in this division since twenty-ten. Currently, she's serving as the VP membership of Kolkata bilingual club, VP education of our own Win Toastmasters Club and the Sergeant at Arms of the Hindi Toastmaster Club in Delhi. Toastmaster Neelu, please come over the podium. It is all yours.
Thank you so much, Toastmasters, Jayati, for the wonderful, wonderful introduction. I am becoming the fan of your sparky smile. Yes, my dear friend, today word of the day is the sparky. As a table topic master, I want to remind you, please use in your speech as much as you can. As a table topic master, I have what? I will give you a topic and on that you have to try to attempt and you can speak two to three minutes. One to two minutes. Sorry, my bad. I'm very happy because today is Woman Day, so you can take two to three minutes or what you can be disqualified jokes apart. Time limit is one to two minutes. And for a guest, you can change once, but everyone present here except Madam Kamla, oh, I don't, I should not call Madam Kamla. Only, only I have, we have a single guest Kamla. So Kamla ji, I want to tell you, you can change the topic. When I will give you topic and if you want to attempt, you can change a topic once if you don't feel comfortable. Time limit is one to two minutes. So before call her, I want to call a toastmaster, show that she can understand how she has to perform. I will request Kamla ji, please come in next time, Miss Second Speaker. So, yes, you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you. I'll come to Toastmasters Neelu. I have to leave. I have another live on Insta for which I need to be there. My heart is here, but I need to go.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much coming and giving your very, very important time to us. Thank you so much. Please give a huge round of applause for our lovely guest Kamla Aya.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all. And I I wish to see you all soon, very soon. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much. And we have one more guest with us, Vini. So before Vini, I want to call Toastmaster Meena Mutha. And are you ready for taking a topic, Toastmaster Meena?
Oh, again, killing me, directly attacking me. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much, friends. Toastmaster Meena is coming from Pune and she is a Toastmaster
Bombay.
Bombay and Aroli Toastmaster Club and she all often visit in our club and Hindi Toastmaster Club a lot. So Toastmaster Meena, I have a topic for you that is a lady is a woman who makes a man behave like a gentleman. A lady is a woman who makes a man behave like a gentleman. Over to you, Toastmaster Meena.
What a topic. The lady who makes the man like a gentleman, right? If I'm not mistaken.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Yes, the woman plays the big role in men.
I think her network is poor.
In life, how even once, you can't hear?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Can you hear me?
Please carry on.
Yes. The love is something I believe it makes if you want to make it. Woman who can do a lot in clean, having devoted and person. Gentleman is something is fine, but somebody who loves you, who's devoted to to you, sacrificing or maybe something who would love to who would love to do what he likes to do. I mean, out of love, I believe that one can get it done, something. I have one simple example. My husband used to hate tomatoes. But out of love, gradually I motivated him to eat tomatoes by putting little lickay in his gravy and later on he adapted it. And he started enjoying it. It is just an example. I mean, with woman has such a power emotionally, then when because there's emotionally stronger, the theater modified in the way you want. So emotionally, it is good to to be just also a physical and overall growth. That's how they become gentlemen. So here is my gentleman. Over to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Meena, though very poor network, but we could understood what you want to convey. Thank you so much for the wonderful, wonderful take. So next I would like to invite Toastmaster Veena. Toastmaster Veena, are you ready? Friends, Toastmaster Veena is ten years old Toastmaster. So, Toastmaster Veena, I have a topic for you. Where there is a woman, there is a magic. Where there is a woman, there is a magic. Toastmaster Veena, over to you.
Thank you, Neelu ma'am, for offering this beautiful topic, sparkling topic, I should say. Because it sparked an idea in my mind, how to, how to start the topic. Woman is, woman has a power. Woman has that magic which can change the man. And for example, my husband never believed in God. He was simply against God, I should say. I I believed in God. I used to worship Sanashima. I used to keep fast. But he was a person, he would bring everything for me, but never the prashad for that that goddess. I felt sad sometimes, but I took it easy. But you see, when he saw my firm faith in goddess Sanashima, there was a day when he also started believing. Actually, see what happened? Whenever he opposed this prayer, he had to suffer for this. If he went for tuition, all of a sudden he would lose a tuition. And after when I paid for that, that he should get it back and he immediately got it. By and by, Santoshi, not I, Santoshima had that power which initiated him to believe in Sanashima. And the day came when he himself also started keeping fast. And he believed in her even more than me, I should say. He also kept fast. But this is so, I can say that it was my devotion in God that inspired him or initiated him to believe in what was good. It was good for him, good for us also. And he believed in that. So I don't say I am not, I am a magician, but my behavior just inverted and converted all the changed all the things, I think. Thank you very much. Over to Toastmaster Neelu Sharma.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Veena. You always inspire us. Friends, Toastmaster Veena, married means she did love marriage and she always share a lot of lovely memories of husband, wife, how she proposed and all. So I believe she will visit us and she will share each and everything with us too. Please give a big round of applause for Toastmaster Veena.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have a very charming personality in our podium, Toastmaster Panna. Toastmaster Panna, would you like to attempt a topic?
Ah ha, now I understood why you were calling me.
Yes, yes. So before giving you any topic, I want to give a small brief about Toastmaster Jati. In her talking in Timor Shakeshans, she said, I was rebellion. So that the very time I created a table topic and that topic is for you, Toastmaster Panna, and that is well behaved woman rarely make history. Well behaved woman rarely make history. Toastmaster Panna, over to you.
Oh, well, I can really agree with this topic that well behaved women rarely make history. It is only when you rebel against the times. It is only when you rebel against what is going on around you. That is only the time when you can make a mark in society. See, the thing is, we are all been brought up in the middle, most of us in the middle-class society where we have been taught to listen to the elders, to listen to everybody, what everyone says. But how much longer will we go on, you know, just listening and obeying and doing what is asked of us? There comes a time in life when we need to just go ahead and make a mark. For instance, when I got married, I got married to a very orthodox family and I was told that I cannot study further. I should not be allowed to cut my hair short and I will not be allowed to take up a job. I behaved well for some time and then I rebelled. When I rebelled, I took up a job after my children were born, both my kids. But my in-laws, they said they will not keep a relationship with me. So the first time around, I gave my anniversary gift to my husband as my resignation letter as my anniversary gift to my husband. That was my first experience of a job, my first experience of a rebel, of rebelling against what was asked of me. Then I thought, no, this is not who I was brought up as. My parents brought me up differently and I want to do different things. If I want to make a mark, if I want to do something, I need to go ahead in my life, what I want to do. I did a correspondence course, I did some training and I went ahead and took up a Montessori school job so that I would be back home when my kids come home from school. So yes, I rebelled. I did fight, I did go against my in-laws, I did cut my hair short, I did take up a job. But unless I did that, I don't think I would be happy with myself and a person. A ladies who are not happy will not bring up happy children. So my dear friends, rebel when you want to get your own way. Over to you, Toastmaster Neelu.
That is called veteran Toastmaster. Though there is no time card in front of her, she finished her speech on time. It's just two minute thirteen second. Thank you so much, Toastmaster Panna, for inspiring us. Please give big round of applause for her. Toastmaster Shruti, if possible, please unshare your screen. I think her
I will, I will, I will. Because I need to show the time clock. This this one I was putting on my phone. I'm so sorry for the mess.
Well, I have a last topic who want to volunteer, who want to come forward. I have only one topic as we are going short of time. I won't give you Toastmaster Shruti. Anyone else? Toastmaster Shruti is going to grab it. Anyone else? Last, last, I'm asking.
Can I go? Can I go?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Call me Swarna, yeah?
Thank you so much. So Toastmaster DTM Swarna, for you I have a topic, the best protection any woman can have in courage. The best protection any woman have, have, can have in courage. Over to you.
Good evening, Toastmaster of the day, Table Topic Master, Club President, fellow Toastmasters and friends. Courage is the best protection that a girl or woman can have. I think courage is something that all of us as humans can have. This is a story that I remember my grandmother telling me when I was a young kid. This is a story from my mythology about something about Ravana and and his blessings from Lakshmi. So the story goes like this, that Ravana had, I mean, you know, Ashtelakshmi has visited him and then they gave him all the best, all the wealth to him and he was doing very well. But then Lakshmi at one point said that I have to go, I don't stay with one person all the time. But because you are a very devoted, you are a very good devotee, I would like to leave one Lakshmi with you. And he said, okay, give me Dhairya Lakshmi, which is courage, right? And so when he said that, the Ashtelakshmi stayed back with him. Meaning that when you have courage in life Meaning that when you have courage in life, you can get everything else. It can be wealth, it can be food, it can be whatever you want, you know? Because if you look at the Ashtralakshmi, it is about, all the components of life are there in the Ashtralakshmi. So my grandmother used to tell me that as a girl or as a human, the first thing that we need to have is courage. And so she used to tell me to pray for courage instead of anything else, she used to say, pray, pray for courage. And today I think that has really helped not just me, but I am able to face life in a different light. Whatever happens, I just take it as, okay, this is part of life, let us move on. And I would like to leave with this message, not for just women, but all of us. The best gift that we can give ourselves is courage. Over to you, Toastmaster, Table Topic Master.
Thank you so much for wonderful take, please give thunderous round of applause for DTM Swarna Kalyan. So friends, this was the table topic session of today's meeting and we are running short of the time as we had a lot of keynote speaker and inspired us in many ways. So hence I'm going to give the podium again to our wonderful Toastmaster of the evening, Toastmaster Jati Datta, over to you.
Thank you, thank you Toastmaster Neelu, that was a wonderful session and I thoroughly enjoyed it. And since we're running, really running short of time, can I have the timings report of all the speakers, are all the speakers qualified?
Except for Toastmaster Mina, everyone is qualified.
Great, great, superb, well done. Okay, can I call on the general evaluator today, please come onto the podium and give her evaluation?
Thank you so much. As I, in the beginning of the meeting, I said that as a general evaluator, we are evaluating the meeting and how the meeting goes. But before I present my report, I would like to call up on the accountant to share her report of how we all felt today in the meeting. Neelu, can you please share your report?
Yes ma'am, thank you so much. So here is the report, Toastmaster Jati used a couple of times. DTM Swarna a few times, Toastmaster Shruti was flawless. Toastmaster Priya a couple of times, so many times, a couple of times. Toastmaster Sangeeta a few times. Guest Vini so many times, many times, many times and couple of times, you know, many times. Toastmaster Priya Darsini so couple of times, a few times. Toastmaster Rupasri flawless and Toastmaster Panna was flawless. Toast, we had a guest, Toastmaster Kamla a few times. So this is the difference between Toastmaster and guest. So they will take little bit advantage of using a few more times because they don't have idea. So this was my report as a accountant. Thank you so much for having me, over to you, General Evaluator.
Thank you so much, fantastic report indeed and very detailed. I'm sure all of us here know where we went wrong. And now I would like to invite our grammarian, although I think we didn't use the word of the day as much as she would have loved to do. But over to you, Sangeeta, to give your grammarian report.
Thank you, so here is my report. Today's good usage of words. Insuperable, compliment, undisputable, elevated, crusader, crisp cotton sari, intensive. Women should be financially independent, I think it's the best phrase. Start something on your own, standing your ground, feel the movement, moment flaunting, mind your own business. And word of the day is used by Toastmaster Neelu only, so thank you. That's all from my side, back to you, General Evaluator.
There has been someone listening to this whole meeting and now she is going to challenge us to see whether we did listen as much as she did, she listened. So I would like to hand over the stage to our active listener here to take over and do your role as the Listening Master.
Thank you, General Evaluator ma'am. I am here with my report. My first question is, for all of you, who told if you educate a woman, you educate, educate the entire society?
Priya Darsini.
Yes. Second one is, woman deserve to be respected. And also she mentioned a tailguy teacher who has a language problem. Yes. Next question is, who is that, who is that Toastmaster? Who is initially, she was in healthcare industry and later she was, she is running a business as an entrepreneur.
Toastmaster Vina.
We need to. Yes. What's the name of her store?
Necessary.
Necessary. No.
It is necessary.
I just asked you what, what the name of, what's the name of her store?
Necessary ethical, ethical sari.
Yeah, ethical store only. Who told childhood, her childhood was not smooth and it was a mark of suffering?
Toastmaster Rupa. Neeluji and Rupa. Rupa. And or.
PM Neelu. Second one, nothing is impossible, we can win if we have deserve, desire for that. Can I say? Yes, yes. Who told I lack confidence every time? My parent taught me to be silent every time.
Rupa, Rupa Sri.
Rupa, yes. Who has a stepmother in her life?
Toastmaster Kamla.
Who has the regret that she would have joined Toastmaster little earlier?
No, Swarna, Swarna, Swarna.
Yes. Who told curly hair has not a corporate look?
Shruti, curly hair Shruti.
Yes. I am fan of your sparky smile.
I've only heard her, so I can see.
Neelu.
I am fan of your sparky smile.
Neelu said for Jati.
Yes. Whose husband hate tomatoes?
Vandana, Vina.
They are two Vina.
Vina, Vina, V for Vina, V for when?
Vina Mutha.
No, Vina Vansal.
Vina Mutha. Vina Mutha, yes, yes.
Oh. Vina. Sorry, husbands wiping happened. Oh god.
Who worship to goddess Sanashima?
Toastmaster Vina.
This is Vina, yes. Yes, Vina Vansal. Thank you, yes. Next question, I got married to a very orthodox family and work and also work in a Montessori school.
Toastmaster Panna.
Yes. Who mentioned a story between Ravana and goddess Lakshmi?
Toastmaster Vina.
Toastmaster Swarna.
Yes.
No, 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 it's.
Toastmaster Swarna, yes. That's all from my side. I am, thank you for, everyone for making this segment so interesting and fun filled because of your listening ability. Thank you once again and over to the General Evaluator.
Fantastic, fantastic, yeah, all, all of them did a fantastic roles today. Now coming to my sharing session, can I share my screen, is that okay?
Are you not able to, do you have share access? Okay, perfect.
You have, okay, can you see?
Yes.
Okay, fine, okay. Now let's see, why do we even do general evaluation? Of course, we know the objective is to have, to, all meetings have to follow the moments of truth. That means, the idea is to have good meetings with good membership, good participation. So that your club is doing well in terms of how it goes progresses from one term to another. So these are the various factors that actually the general evaluation should help your club from, to improve or whatever it is there, right? So now let us look at the first impressions. I would say that my first impression of this club was very cozy. It's a very cozy club and friendly club. And so when you're chatting, you sort of brought in, everyone else was new into the group to feel a part of it. And that was something that was very unique and I think you should continue doing it so that you can expand yourself from just the few of you here to grow and expand the club as well, okay? And then in terms of fellowship and how the participation was, was all very well done. Now let me go into the different roles that I'm going to evaluate. So overall, the meeting was very well done. The only, it started on time, it was a great blend of networking and learning. I liked the way that Kio Modi was, the Toastmaster of the Day was actually asking things in between so that we are also chatting and connecting with the, with everyone else in the club. So we get to know members like me for the first time I'm here. But I, I sort of feel, oh, I know, I think I know these people little better because of that interaction in between speeches, in between segments. So that was very well done. And Neelu was very good to follow up with me, she booked me so much in advance, almost like a month in advance. And then she kept confirming with me, are you okay, are you coming, are you? So that is something that is very important, especially online and sometimes we, different time zones, we may tend to forget. And of course, the introductions that the Toastmaster of the Day gave and she confirmed with me was very well done, thank you so much. And I would say to a large extent, your program sheet is very well done. It is just that today, I would say that we did not follow the timing. So even though we were supposed to do things at, probably at the time that we were doing, we are about half an hour late. So that's something that we have to pay attention. And now coming to the Sergeant in Arms, enthusiastic, fantastic, yes. And the way you engage with all of us, you said celebrate yourself, be, I mean, you know, you should clap for yourself because you are being you and, and that was something very powerful. Because sometimes we forget to acknowledge ourselves, we are always applauding someone else and you asked us to applaud ourselves and that was something very well done, keep it up. You introduced and then handed over to the Toastmaster of the Day very well. And then you also gave the rules that we have to follow, which was very, it was perfectly done. So no, no comments or no rule for improvement as such for the Sergeant in Arms, very well done. And congratulations on that. Now coming to the Toastmaster of the Day, fantastic energy, right? Girls, can we all give her a round, a big round of applause? Because I think she had that energy that she kept going for two hours and that is something, you know, storytelling. She started off with her own personal story and then what I would say is, I know we like to talk, we like to do. But as a Toastmaster of the Day, it is the responsibility of the Toastmaster of the Day to make sure that our meetings are on time. So probably next time you take it up, Jati, maybe you should just watch to see that we are on time and keep, keep the meeting going so that we don't have, lose members as the time goes. That's the problem when you extend your meeting, sometimes people drop off saying, oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting late, I have to go and things like that, yeah? So just to make sure that we get the two hour commitment from people, we also have to make sure that our meetings are two hours. Now timer, she, she gave a perfect description of why timing is important and what should be done. Today, I'm not sure Shruti seemed very distracted, okay? So I sometimes saw card, sometimes I didn't see card and, and then I was also confused like, is she going to time me today or not timing, that timing me or whatever was there, because sometimes I saw the cards were not there. What I thought was probably if, if the keynote addresses were timed, probably I think it should have been a better one so that the whole overall meeting would also be in time. That's something for the, for the club to consider that when you all have keynote speeches, please make sure that it is all timed and, and even if you go professionally, keynote speeches are always timed. So we need to make sure that we practice to do timed speeches. And I'm sure the division, our first speaker is actually a division contest winner and she knows how important it is to be timed. And so it is important that we remember time when we are giving any speech for that matter. Now our counter Neelu, very, I liked your first way of describing, you know, the, the animation that you gave about ours and arms and it was very beautifully done and of course your overall report was also good. So keep that up. As a Table Topic Master, you did fantastic, the topics were so interesting, sometimes challenging. In fact, the first topic I thought was, wow, this was quite challenging. And I was quite impressed with how Minu tried to address it, although we couldn't hear her well, but she did a good job in addressing the topic, so keep it up. I think we need to have challenging topics so that we also expand in our impromptu thinking. And then Grammarian Sangeeta, two hats today, I think Neelu and, and Sangeeta and wore two hats. So congratulations, it's difficult to do two roles and you all did it fantastically well. Starting with SAA and then doing the grammarian and watching what we were saying and rewriting it down. The report was very well done, sparky impact, you know, keep it up, keep it up Sangeeta. And I heard you were a very new member, so, and a young member, keep, keep it rolling. I'm sure you're going to go places in time to come. And then our listening ma- master was Priya. She had her questions, in fact, she had noted down so many questions, very impressed. But just I want to challenge you that next time you do this role, maybe it is good to change the order of the questions that you ask because how we remember is how the meeting goes. So when you challenge us to remember what probably asked like in between, you change the order, then people are, oh, which who, who told that, you know, so you're actually challenging us to remember things differently. So that is something that you may want to consider. So I would say that other than that, overall, the whole meeting was very good. And in summary, I think, yeah, Win is a beautiful club, keep it rocking, keep cheering each other and growing. And I hope to see a bigger club in times to come. And thank you so much for having me here today and I'm privileged to be a part of this meeting. And let us celebrate women, just not this month or this day or whatever it is. Let us celebrate who we are throughout the year so that we, as women can inspire not just ourselves, but the whole world as well. Because I, I believe we have the power to do it. And like how our presiding officer said, she said, you know, let us help each other's crown, you know? So we have to help each other to grow as well and this is what we are doing here today. So thank you and over to you, Toastmaster of the Day.
Thank, sorry, thank you, General Evaluator for that awesome evaluation. I'm sure we are going to get a lot of lessons by incorporating your suggestions. Thank you so much. All right, ladies, just to conclude. Just my mom wrote these few lines in Bengali, I'm just going to translate this in English. Her soul is fierce, her heart is brave, her mind is. Her soul is fierce, her heart is brave, her mind is strong. There is no limit to what we women can accomplish. And with that, Happy Women's Day to all of us over here. Thank you and over to you, Presiding Officer, Toastmaster Shruti, President. The podium is yours, thank you.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Jati, for sharing that story of your mom. And special thank you to all the members of WIN Toastmasters Club, members from the entire Toastmaster fraternity who took out time, who chose Toastmasters above everything else on their schedule and choose to spend 1:20 minutes with each and every wonderful soul who is present out here. A special and heartfelt thanks to distinguished Toastmaster Swarna Kalyan, who is the Club Director of District 80 and also is going to be guiding our growth as superwoman in our Toastmasters fraternity. So, hooray, thank you so much, Swarna, for joining us. We are so glad that Nilo contacted you and you could make it to this meeting. Thank you so much. A special thank you to Toastmaster Priya Darshini and Gupta for sharing, for letting all the cats out of her bag as she puts, for sharing her story in such a manner where there were snippets. Probably I saw myself in that snippet and that is where the moment I would lose the attention and there is something that she is saying that like Shruti, is that you? Is that you narrating your story? That's the power of storytelling and that's the power of women or any human for that matter, who has gone through it, who has internalized it, the experience, the challenges and is able to narrate them with a story. So I always believe in this one fact that if not for stories, who all, who are we? We all are walking stories and we are just finding an outlet, a place to present our stories. And Toastmaster is one such place where we are able to fix those stories in a way which help you to get an introduction, a body, a takeaway and you inspire some, you win some contests. You present yourself somewhere in that way, you grow on your own with your stories, with learning stories from Rupa Sri, from Pannaji, from Meenaji, from Vina, from Jati, everyone, each one of us. Each one of you is a book in its own. So keep writing that book, keep enriching that book with wonderful adjectives, word of the day, less of ours and arms and more of wonderful phrases in English language or your language of love and affection and camaraderie and warmth. And with this, today there is one announcement that we are going to be having no voting because at WIN, all of us are winners. So with this, I congratulate each and every one of you for being a part of this meeting and helping us to conduct this wonderful session and sharing inspiring stories with this. As the Presiding Officer, I call this meeting close and the floor is open for informal networking. Over to you, everyone out here, please stop the recordings.